Gentle mics will speak extra loud.
Check, 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 check. Nope.
So we'll have to talk a little bit louder because we have no mics. So let's, let's, let me call the Village of Oregon meeting to order Monday, December fifth, twenty twenty-two. Candy, can we have roll call?
Yes. Vilo.
Here.
Glish.
Here.
Jacobson.
Here.
Peterson.
Here.
Van Kampen.
Yeah.
And one.
Here.
And Beshin is excused this evening.
All right, so Jeff has asked if we can move up eleven A, which is the proclamation recognizing retirement of Sonny Samu after twenty-one years of service with the Village of Oregon. Anybody, are we okay with that?
Okay. Jeff?
All right, I figured we'd do that just so, you know, Sonny would, he's on his last couple of days here with the village. He'd love to sit through a couple of hours of village board meeting, but we'll spare him of that. Well, Sonny's retiring effective January second, second or third, whatever that Tuesday, I think it is. And, you know, Sonny has been with the Public Works since October fifteenth of two thousand and one. Currently on our Public Works list, he is the third longest-serving Public Works person on our, in our group. And Sonny joined us twenty-one years ago, two months and a couple of days as a wastewater operator and has served not only in that role, but has served in a lot of other roles to help with Public Works. As you know, in Public Works, we cover a lot of things, but also under us is the water and sewer utility. And what that means is at times they get called into other projects as well. You know, Sonny has done an excellent job as an operator. He's extremely well-knowledge on how the system operates and how things we need to do to be able to keep things in balance. It's a very scientific process down there in keeping all the chemistry together and making sure things are running well. So he's done a, just an outstanding job with that. But I want to talk a little bit about Sonny and his commitment towards what I would call special projects. And, and that's what I really like to see is I like to see employees when they really truly invest in their job and invest in the community. And, and Sonny has done just that for us. Most notably, you know, we have done a transition to basically put all of our documents and everything in electronic format. You know, when I first started here seven and a half years ago, we were kind of on the cusp of just starting that. And prior to that, it was basically all paper records. And some of that involves getting all the data into our system, and we've done a lot of work with that. The other end of that is actually knowing what the condition of our system is out in the field. And you have probably seen Sonny at times out and about in the truck over a manhole, looking down and logging every little bit of piece of information about that manhole and then coming back and diligently putting that into our system. It's a very tedious job and a very, requires a very meticulous and thorough review. And so now, I mean, I, how many manholes do we have, Sonny?
Twelve hundred and sixty-six, that's ours.
Twelve, twelve hundred and sixty-six manholes.
And there's sixty-some that's private and so I'll tell thirteen.
What boggles my mind is Sonny can sometimes remember exactly the number and the location and everything. He's got that kind of memory. Sometimes it just aggravates me. He'll come up and say, you know, manhole three seventy-one. I said, no, I don't. But he's really good with that and he's always, always very good to, when he's out there and he calls up and he says he sees a problem. And that really helps the rest of our group out a lot. But right now, on our, on our graphical information system, our GIS system, you can highlight and click on any one of those manholes as well as water services and other stuff. And it comes up with a lot of information and graphs and figures. We use it to look at maintenance areas. We use it to look at areas that we need to make improvements. Whenever we do roadway projects, it's extremely valuable information. And he has really single-handedly done the manhole inspection for all twelve hundred plus of those manholes. And then just little projects that I, that I, I know that if I want to assign somebody to a project and see it done and done well and kind of even done, maybe even beyond my perfectionistic attitude, I know I can ask Sonny to do it. Whether it's trimming trees along Cusack Parkway or if we have a request from a resident to come help with something, he's always willing to help. He and I joke around sometimes. I mean, we haven't always gotten along perfectly, but I think that's part of a relationship is, is being able to know that there can be disagreements, but you can still work together well. And, and I mean, not just work together and coat that over, but work together and have a truly good employee, employer relationship and a friend relationship. So I count you as both, Sonny. It is an honor to see you get to your retirement date. We truly do wish you well. I have a proclamation that I have in the packet that I would like the village board to read. And then I think Sonny would have a few comments on his own, but we'll miss you and wish you really well.
Well, I don't have it in front of me. Do you want to just, you want to read it?
Huh?
Go ahead, go ahead and read it.
Okay. I'll read it out. Proclamation recognizing Sonny Samu for his outstanding service and dedication to the Village of Oregon. The village board and staff of the Village of Oregon, Wisconsin, wish to recognize Sonny Samu for his many positive contributions to the Village of Oregon. Whereas, Sonny began his career with the Village of Oregon on October fifteenth, two thousand and one, and will be retiring from Public Works on January second, twenty twenty-three for a total of twenty-one years, two months and nineteen days of dedicated service. And whereas, Sonny has been an integral part of our Public Works department as a sewer utility plant operator, obtaining and faithfully maintaining his wastewater operator certifications and laboratory credentials. And whereas, Sonny is a hard-working, dedicated and detail-oriented individual who is constantly thinking of ways to accomplish a task efficiently and effectively. Whereas, Sonny has a unique ability to remember facts and figures of our wastewater collection system, including remembering trouble areas and maintenance schedules. And whereas, Sonny has undertaken many tasks to greatly enhance our sewer, water and storm sewer utilities in the inspection, logging and mapping of our systems, which is extremely helpful for our utility staff and engineers. And whereas, Sonny is a valuable, valued member of our team, is respected by others and will be missed. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Oregon, Village of Oregon formally recognizes Sonny Samu in his many accomplishments he has achieved with the village, and we wish him the very best in his well-deserved retirement. Presented on December fifth, twenty twenty-two at the village board meeting, signed by Randy Glish, President and Jeff Rall, Director of Public Works.
Sounds okay that I'm gonna sit right here. Can everybody hear me? I told myself I'd keep this short and sweet, so I just want to thank you for the recognition first and foremost. And lastly, I want to thank everyone for giving me the opportunity to have served the residents of this community for the past twenty-one plus years. That's really all I have to say. It's always been about just doing my job the best that I could and making it a better place to live. So, thank you.
Did it well.
Dear, thanks, Sonny.
All right, let's, let's keep moving. We'll move to three approval, November twenty-first, twenty twenty-two, village board need minutes. If I can have a motion by Phil and Jenna, second. Any discussion by anybody? Otherwise, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Four is public appearances, comments, communications. For A, first up is presentation from Ann Michaels of Green Pastures Living regarding future reuse of two forty-nine North Main Street. And Ann, we have slotted fifteen minutes. Is that, that'll work for you?
I will try to speak loudly.
Okay. Ann, do you want to tell us your name and where you live?
Yeah, yeah, I'll do that. In case y'all want to put me on your Christmas card list. I'm Ann Michaels at six thirty South Woods Edge Drive. It's a mouthful, but I've lived there for ten years. And I'm also founder and executive director of Green Pastures Living, which is a nonprofit organization that I founded. Gosh, I can read right off of my thing. And our purpose is to provide affordable housing and assistance to resources for senior citizens who live independently and wish to remain rooted in rural living. And so I just thank you for this opportunity just to expand upon, you know, what I started in November for three minutes. And so just a little bit more about my organization. Yeah, I decided to go low-tech in case we had any issues.
Do you want this one?
Yeah, sure. Wow. That's great. Thank you. So I founded it because we're really trying to solve the problem of the underserved rural middle market or middle-class senior. So I just want you to take a moment to think about maybe someone you know, a loved one or a family member that is struggling with housing. You know, they sit in their kitchen table with their head in their hands and they just don't know what to do or where they're going to go. Because the house that they have lived in is just beyond them, either maintenance or stairs or just too much to handle or not where they want to be, maybe close to services. And so I developed Green Pastures Living to really fulfill that, to keep people in community, in green and growing environment with resources for caring if need be. It is just independent housing, so it's not skilled nursing or anything. But there's a great need for it. And if you zoom down, I kind of, it's really small, but just some of the facts of
Which one?
Way down, like way down here.
Okay, got it.
I can't remember what survey. It's probably the Affordable Housing or something that Elise knows about. So it talks about, kind of, the numbers are the Village of Oregon and Dane County. And so there's, at that time was about eight hundred households. And then, so if you, it's probably hard to see in this view, but about half of them fall into the income that we are hoping to serve, which is the middle class under, I think if you keep going, under like six, seventy-five thousand dollar income. And really developers are not building to this bracket. They're doing either higher income or they're building, some people are building to low-income senior housing. But because these people have some sort of savings, they don't qualify for the income requirements of the low-income housing. So they're kind of the lost middle that there just isn't housing for us. And it's almost a majority of the people in our village and area. And so as they age and increase aging that population, we plan to serve this niche that is hard to serve. If you have any knowledge of affordable housing, it's, it's a very tricky way, but I know that we can do this in a collaborative effort. And it's, it's the reason why I kind of entered with curiosity this North Main property survey that was done this summer through Vanderwall. So I guess the next, yeah. So the proposal recommendations are referencing the second page of the memo from the survey results from the summer. So they're not directly recommendations. To me, they're, they're reflected upon the survey results. And so they put five recommendations, so I was just going to briefly talk to that, so you can go back to one. And so the, the first recommendation is that, you know, we would go through, you know, the process of the, I always get the letters wrong. The RFPs process. Sorry, I'm dyslexic. So I will say the, whatever. The process that, you know, we have started with the assessment and things like that. And we would serve that as a nonprofit developer in a public-private venture. So. And then the second one was recommended that part of North Main would be a park. And I'm always full of great ideas. And so my idea is to call it the People's Park because I feel like it could be a mixed use of not only senior housing, but it could have some passive park space, walking trails. And also a great idea is to maybe have a bike repair site, kind of like they have at, now I'm trying to think. It's not, is it Lerner Park? Alpine, whatever. There's a, the right, is that Lerner?
Keller Alpine Meadows.
Yeah, Keller Alpine. So they have a little bike station.
Yes.
And so it'd be great to maybe have another one in, in nod to the bikes of Africa that, like, that's where they used to be stationed at that property as well as what Wendell and Al did for all the bike rodeo. And just in general, have a spot for people to repair bikes if they needed to add. So just coordinating all sorts of ways to make this site great for downtown use for every, for everyone. So those are just some ideas of how to make it a park, not only for our residents, but also as a great gathering space downtown for everyone. Number three is more fun, addressing stormwater. So something I, so if the next page, I was, just a quick question. If this, when we were reviewing this for the library, if this was resourced, the land and water resource website, was that considered when we were? Okay, so I just briefly put that up. It's the next page. I'm not sure if you can see that lovely map. So within that green rectangle is just the, the green and the yellow are different soils, and so you can kind of see what kind of soil is. And I think this is fun because I'm a master gardener and you need to know what soil is there, not only for, you know, building, but you also for gardening. And so, so there's different classifications and it's, you know, for drainage, they are both classified as well-drained. And then they also give classifications if there should be basements or not. And we don't really plan to do basements, but that's just really what I wanted to highlight just in my research that, you know, this is the soil that we're, that we're working with as well as the slope and things like that. So just know that we would work with that. And then also just to compare, Rolling Meadows Senior Living places do not have basements either. And it's, it's, it's also good that, you know, residents are, don't have stairs in general, but it's also good that we're not disturbing the soil even more, especially if you want to preserve the trees because they have a lot of root space. So good for both ways. And then number four, yes, we would do affordable housing because the IRS makes us and it's part of our mission. And then, yeah, making the houses congruent with, you know, the one-story houses are kind of back along Market Street, so I think a one-story duplex would definitely fit in the neighborhood. And then a possible two-story, if you go to the Main Street, so if you look at the other pictures, you know, if there was a duplex on the Main Street, maybe that would have a second level that would be a community space, not only for the residents to gather and do some community projects, but also to be, you know, congruent with the, the two-story houses that are along Main Street. So just in our planning to follow the recommendations that were already put forth from the survey and that we just wish to honor really a lot of the public comments through the survey as well. Because what I got from it that made me think that Green Pastures Living is a really good fit is the fact that through the comments, people really wanted senior housing. They wanted a passive park and they wanted to recoup some of the village's investment in the property. So that's where I just end in five where we're not asking for a TIF. We're hoping through our request for proposals to work with a land lease. Where the village would actually retain ownership and work on the investment by getting a lease payment from us to pay down that loan. So then you have some income coming in, if that makes sense. And so that would really honor what the survey and what the village goals are. So those are just some of my ideas I wanted to share. Not sure how I'm doing on time. But I wanted to see if you had any questions about these ideas or about my organization in general.
So Ann, you still have about five minutes.
Oh, I do? Okay. Well, I kind of just, I covered, I covered most things. I guess something I also wanted to touch on in my research, I've also reached out to the League of Municipalities of, you know, with the land lease idea, who has already done this before? And she got back to me just this afternoon, which was great timing. And so there has been other municipalities in Wisconsin that have done some similar projects working with the village to provide senior housing. And I could share with that, with you more, but I was just saying, there's six senior duplexes in Hatley. There's one in Nielsville. Clintonville has a senior village, Chilton, and the DNR has also worked to rehab some round fields into senior housing in Richland Center. And then also, I'm also working with the Village of Mazo Mani to rehab their elementary school to have senior housing on their second floor. So those are just some of the small villages that are cooperative agreements to provide senior housing within village limits. So I think that's all I was really going to add and just any other questions, probably.
Anybody on the board who's got comments or questions for you? Anybody? Yeah, Mike?
Yeah. What's your target rental cost?
So we have to follow the parameters of the IRS, and so we have to set our costs at those parameters according to the middle incomes. But through our business plan, we're, we're putting together it as a land lease, or not land lease. It's kind of like a condo life lease. That's what I'm trying to think of. Too many similar words. So it's, what's that?
The microphone's not working, Susan.
So I'm trying to speak my loud mom talk, but I can only do so much. So there won't be, so there would be a monthly maintenance fee and, but then there would also be a life lease, which is kind of a buy-in option. So it's, it's hard to compare that to just rental, if that makes sense. But it's still in the parameters of what the middle income is.
Have you done, where else have you done projects like this?
This would be our pilot project.
Okay. I have two concerns about this. One is when I look at this map, the driveway you have is awfully close to a house that's currently existing. That house was historically built two feet from the property line, so if you, if you take the setback that's ten feet and remove five feet from it, you're basically seven feet from the house, which is awfully close for a roadway in, in my thought. The second thing is, is when we put out the, the survey, roughly, well, over half of, of the responses in the survey said they want a green space here. And, you know, there was, there was also a fair number of people that wanted development, sizable minorities. So from my perspective, you know, that really lends itself to, nobody gets exactly what they want. We, we make compromises on this. And this, while I, I'm okay with building on, I think it's, it's feasible to build on part of the property. Building on all of it like this is not what I would expect people who filled out the survey actually thought of as green space. So from my perspective, you know, trimming back a proposal like this would make a lot of sense because I don't think that this really, really matches what, what the community said they wanted.
Yeah, I hear what you're saying. These are just concepts according to what is currently the density and what it's zoned for. So that's just what the architect started as, and that's why he put eight and ten on there. Just to see what you could do currently, and we're willing to work with any changes. You know, if it, if the lot had, you know, divided up to just do housing in the back lot, that's fine. So we're, this is just a first concept of what is possible with what's currently there. Does that make sense?
Yeah, and I appreciate that.
Yeah.
I'm just trying to lay my comments out so you have an idea of
Yeah.
what I'm thinking.
First draft.
But, you know, senior housing, I think, is needed in this community, affordable senior housing. So I really commend you on doing this and, and, you know, I'm interested in what, how this evolves going forward.
Yeah, I appreciate your comments. It's a very hard area to serve just because no for-profit developer is going to do it. But yet it's challenging to have low-income housing work as well. You know, so it's, it's a definitely, has to be a creative way to figure out how to do that. And yeah, we, we definitely want to honor the green space. And yeah, I, I think I'd be up, you know, if there wasn't a, you know, building on Main Street, maybe that is just open space. You know, but that could also be a community spot as well. That maybe has public art and a walking space or a gathering space, you know. We're willing to work with the village and other organizations to make this the best that we can.
So, so Ann, the life lease, is it like the Rolling Meadows model?
Yes, yes. But the, the Rolling Meadows is not what you consider affordable housing. It's, it's not restricted housing costs. So there's no income limits. Does that make sense?
Yes.
So there's either that or affordable housing, which is, has limits on income. Does that make sense?
Okay. Yes, Amanda?
Yeah, so interesting idea.
Thank you.
The, the only thing that, that kind of jumped out at me is I know the community wanted, was interested in saving at least one, but preferably both of those big bur oak trees.
Yep.
And I know this is a first draft and things can move, but just, I would just say, keep in mind that, you know, the roots are as big as the canopy of the tree and then you need room for machinery if you're going to build around.
Absolutely, yeah.
Like, according to this, you wouldn't be able to build buildings seven or ten probably.
Oh, yeah.
Very difficult.
Yeah, I think seven and ten or number six on the other one, yeah. Those with elevation, you know, may not work out.
Yeah, I just, I just wanted you to be aware of that when
The architect's from Milwaukee, so he doesn't know, but he looked at the topography and, and what, you know, what was included to make this. So, like I said, he just tried to put it towards the density that it's already zoned at. Does that make sense?
Yes.
All right.
Okay.
Eric, did I see your hand? Nope? Nope.
But I just wanted to add, the architect is very conscientious of not only building around the environment, but also like making it really accessible for seniors. So it's a really, he has had a lot of experience doing both. And I'm excited for the next drafts. But I appreciate the comments.
Anybody else? All right, Ann, we appreciate you coming and
Thank you.
presenting to us.
Yeah, I look forward to hearing and getting a copy of the RTF. Did I say that right? RFP. I don't, I keep saying the wrong, I'm sorry, I'm dyslexic. The request, I'll just look forward to the request for proposal and not use the letters. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, let's go to four B, which is presentation by Glenn Hofer on Autumn Ridge Phase Three conceptual plan and related annexation. Glenn, can you do fifteen minutes? Is that enough?
Oh, yeah, plenty.
Okay.
Bruce and I will present.
All right. Tell us who you are, your addresses.
My name is Bruce Holler with Denofrio Kotkin Associates at seventy-five thirty Western Way in Madison.
I'm Glenn Hofer, owner and developer of Autumn Ridge and the Foxborough Golf Course. Is it possible to call up our three threes plan? So Bruce and I have been working hard coming up with a plan that we can add housing on the Foxborough Golf Course, convert it from an eighteen-hole golf course to a twelve-hole golf course. And our plan, which I'm very pleased with, we're doing it without really any of the current residents on the golf course losing their, their golf course home. So I think, I think we got a, a good plan on, on how we convert it from eighteen holes to twelve holes. I'd like to develop it same manner that I've been developing Autumn Ridge, doing it in small phases and then not go to the next phase until lot sales make it okay to go to the next one. So what we're presenting here is Um, so what we're presenting here is, um, Phase Three, Four, and Five. Phase Three is land that I owned, uh, before I bought the golf course. Uh, Phase Four is, um, on the golf course holes, uh...
Four, five, six, ten.
Four, five, six, seven, uh, 10 and 11. Um, and then Phase Five is in the township of Rutland currently, and it's, uh, uh, holds, it's the driving range and holds one, two, and three. And, um, Phase Four is currently in the urban service district. What I would like to, my plan is that this year, we get Phase Three, uh, go through CARPSY along with Phase Five, but I really only want to develop Phase Three, be ready to start, if everything works out, be ready to start moving dirt in August. So I'll, I'll let, um, Bruce kind of explain the, uh, what Phase Three looks like.
Yeah, so Phase Three looks very similar to, um, what we've presented, um, in the past, um, as a concept, uh, just more or less fine-tuning it. Um, we've got, um, the, the lots in pink coral color.
Change it really loud, Bruce.
Those are, the, the pink lots are duplex lots that we've, um, basically have, excuse me, um, we've lotted each parcel so that there's a zero lot line or twin home, so that there's potential for ownership of each, of each half of the duplex. Um, the lots are very similar to the sizes we've, we, we put in and across the street in Phase One and Two. Um, and it, it, the idea was to just kind of blend, blend into Phase Four and, and make things work in congruency with Phase Five. Um, you'll notice the, um, the bright green lines, the little green lines with the pink dots, those represent the sanitary sewer and how the project is being served. Uh, there's a manhole, uh, or just a stub that, um, that is available in Hawthorne Park. Um, and based on the information that Sonny probably entered into that manhole, um, we were able to...
He'll tell you.
We were able to, um, um, come out of there and, and bring it up into Phase Three as a gravity sewer, so we don't have the need for a, a grinder pump or a, a lift station to pump the sewer, sewer water. Now, we'll be getting into a sewer study to make sure that there's capacity in, in downstream for the, for the additional lots we're putting in. Uh, Phase Three is 38 lots, um, and then between Phase Four and Five, uh, 43 and 31 respectively, which amounts to 112 lots total, um, once all three phases at this point that we have shown here, uh, could potentially be developed as. Um, from a timing standpoint, like just Glenn had mentioned, uh, Phase Three, we'd like to, uh, we'd like to get approvals in place, annexation, urban service area, and, um, water and sewer approvals for, for construction to begin in the, you know, August of 23. Um, Phase Four and Five, that's a couple years down the road, Glenn?
Correct. Um, you know, if everything goes well and lot sales keep going like they have been, which I'm hopeful, but I'm also realist, uh, but yeah, Phase Three, what I'm looking at is, um, be ready in 2023 and then 2024, and then start Phase Four in 2025 and 2026. Um, and if they keep going at that pace, then Phase Five would be two years in 2027 and 2028.
Uh, just real briefly on the stormwater management, um, Phase Five is the receiving lands of the water that's coming from Phase Three, and all of the, um, lands upstream of that, which also include Lot Phase Two, there's about 109 acres worth of watershed that drains through that northeast corner of Lot Three. Um, Phase Five and the, and the maintenance shop, uh, those, those holes there, they'll stay as-is, um, you know, as in its current condition, we'll, we'll, we'll daylight the water and get the water to that land, but it'll flow in the same pattern that it is now, and it won't be until Phase Five, until we do Phase Five, or possibly some of Phase Four, that's when you'll start to see a change in some of these improvements being made to, to control the water for those, for those developments.
Which I think that Phase Three plan kind of shows the drainage pathways and then the sewer, um, it's the Phase Three plan, Jeff. There you go, yes.
Yeah, that's just...
You can reduce the size of it to eighteen more, five would, yeah, there you go.
Yeah, so that's kind of what, how, how the existing condition, or the condition will look once the lots are platted, you'll see that there's really, we're really not doing anything to, to that, uh, was slotted for Phase Five, so, um, except for putting that sanitary sewer, um, through the property.
So Glenn, question, I know we've talked to you about this, but I'm going to ask it anyway. Um, I know we suggested, why don't you do, do all of it, or at least get CARPSY and annexation done at once? Wouldn't it be, isn't it cheaper to do it that way?
Well, that, that's what I would like, I'm unwilling to either, um, like we did Phase Two, just took that through CARPSY. What I'd like to do is, Phase Four is already in the urban service district, Phase Three and Five, I'd like to get it through CARPSY, um, this winter, but I really only want to develop Phase Three and annex Phase Three, kind of like what I did with Phase One, I annexed Phase One, um, sold the lots, built the homes, did Phase Two the same way. So, to answer your question, yes, what, uh, village staff and I are looking at doing is, um, um, annex, not annexing, um, getting, uh, Phase Three and Phase Five through CARPSY this winter, but then, I'm hoping and believing we can get a developers' agreement and then just annex Phase Three, um, next summer.
Um, yeah, just to add on, um, some of what has been mentioned, we did have a neighborhood meeting at the end of October that was really, really well-attended. Um, I think the majority of the questions, um, were absolutely related to the golf course changes, so I know you're Mike Barry, he's here tonight too, and answered some of those questions, and I think people were thoroughly on board, um, with some of those golf course changes, um, concerns about water and, and making sure that golf course, you know, access and views were preserved. Um, we have kind of gone back and forth with Glenn about annexing and approvals for all the future phases versus just taking them one at a time, and I think, um, you know, we can work with Glenn with doing his phase approach, it'll just be, um, you know, on us to make sure that we are going, we're kind of downing our eyes and crossing our teeths with the development agreement to make sure that, um, those future phases and the, the larger, you know, stormwater management pond, those things are, um, you know, kind of guaranteed for those future phases and that we're not creating, you know, kind of interim problems, um, as these phases get built out. But I think it'll just be definitely more paperwork, probably a little bit more costing Glenn's, you know, point, but that's his choice, and, um, we can definitely do a phased approach, it'll just be, um, need to be carefully done with all these agreements.
Other, yeah, Mike?
So several of these, Phase Four and Phase Five will be out beyond our new comprehensive plan. No?
No, so our new comprehensive plan will be, uh, 2024 to 2034.
Right, but I'm saying it'll be after we redo our comprehensive plan. It'll be under the new one.
Yeah, by the time, yeah.
So some of the changes that you're actually going to be discussing later tonight regarding density and things like that are, may very well be in place by the time for Phase Four and Phase Five come in, you know, come into being. Does that change the, the expected plating and things like that for these lots?
Well, I think that's kind of two different conversations, so we're talking about creating more, uh, flexibility for dens, denser development around the village. Uh, I think we would also still, I mean, this is, that'll be part of the discussion next year, is do we still want to have our more traditional, you know, larger lot, um, homes and single-family neighborhoods available around the village, and I think it's, it will likely end up as a mix of multiple options, so, um, I think right now, because this is a golf course, this is shown as in our comp plan, it's sort of the recreation type use, um, so next year, knowing that this is coming down the pike, we might put it as planned neighborhood or something like that, or leave it as golf course, and then when we get to the point of Four and Five actually being, um, you know, annexed and going through that development, then Glenn would apply for a comprehensive plan, and then, and then, um, make that change to single-family neighborhood, or if it's a mix with multiple housing types, looking at whatever's the best fit neighborhood for his, his planned mix of housing.
Yeah, just, just as long as Glenn's aware that there may be changes coming and, yeah. I got to give kudos to you that you actually were able to do this and preserve golf course views for everyone and get the neighborhood to buy into it, that's pretty amazing.
All right, anybody else? Yeah, Jen?
Um, I was, had a question about looking at, uh, Foxfield Road that goes between Phase One and Phase Three, and, um, how it crosses over MM. Um, just how, how those two will interact, because I know we've had, uh, comments about Foxfields and speed and, and, so now making that longer and straighter, is there going to be like a stop sign there? How's that going to, am I jumping ahead? How that's going to...
Well, it, we've, we've, um, set up the, the line work of the road system so that it becomes a T-intersection, um, so that, you know, the, the entrance into Phase Three or the Foxfield is, is, you know, it's directly across from, uh, the current, you know, the current Foxfield intersection, so...
But it'll be a T instead of a four-way?
I think it'll be a four-way intersection, yeah.
Four-way intersection, but currently just two-way stop control is the plan, but we'll have to look at the traffic volumes and, and everything just to see what, if there is improvements or there would be developer contribution towards future improvements, that type of thing.
Okay.
In, in Phase One, we've put a bypass, you know, on both sides, both directions, a bypass lane as part of, uh, Phase One, so we're, we're set up to basically cross MM, just got to cut our hill down there.
Yeah, a traffic study might end up being one of those things that we require as part of the development agreement, you know, you know, what's the impact of adding these homes in Phase Three, or maybe if, once Phase Four is in, there's a certain, there's more homes on that side.
What, what would trigger that?
Yeah, what might trigger a light or where we stop or something like that.
And one of the things that Glenn is, is, and Bruce are proposing, that's not easily seen here, but that would be a connection from Phase Four into, um, Fox Run Court over here, um, which would be actually a very nice, nice connection to have.
Yeah.
And then also, uh, water connection back here too. We've talked about that, having some sort of...
Water main loop?
Huh?
Water main loop?
Water main loop, yeah. There might be cheaper ways to do it, but somewhere along the way, we do need to loop the water back here.
Okay.
All right, anybody else?
All right, Bruce and Glenn, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Good night. Interesting. All right, we'll go to, uh, 4C, which is public comment. This part of the agenda allows members of the public to provide information to the village board, including items both on and off the agenda. We've got three minutes to this. Who would like, anybody like to come up? You can state your name and address, please, we appreciate that.
Hi, my name is Sally Marshall-Henry. I'm at 124 Rosewood Avenue in Oregon. And I'm here, uh, I, I am not in favor of the proposed development to build eight to 10 homes at the 249 Main Street location, uh, and no offense to, uh, the Great Pastures Living Developer, Anne, you did a great job on your presentation. In my opinion, this type of development is not appropriate for the green space, according to the results from the survey sent out to the Oregon community a while back, as you all will know, the community voted to, uh, support the plan, uh, to put in a centrally located park or green space at 249 Main Street location. Um, a park that is centrally located and easily accessible to downtown businesses, residents, the elderly, and school-aged children, uh, so that they could walk to it. Green space where people can spend more time in nature and participate in some of the nature-focused activities that the Friends of Oregon Sculpture Garden Committee has planned for the park. In closing, we often forget how much humans depend upon nature. Uh, if you think about it, we are all in favor of clean water, clean air to breathe, gardens, art, the saving of the 250-year-old trees, and overall green space. Even in the center, uh, uh, even in the center of Oregon on a small two-plus acre lot, we have the right to breathe fresh air by preserving nature, which ultimately preserves ourselves. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else? All right.
I'm Susan Shedevy at 1860 County Road, MM, Fitchburg. Anne, you did a very good presentation, and possibly in the future, we could work together. I'm here to represent the, um, Oregon Sculpture Nature Park, and the plan that Anne is proposing would involve a lot of heavy equipment driving back and forth on that property, which will definitely kill the iconic trees that so many people have been wanting to save. And in addition to killing the trees, the deep roots that the trees, where the trees are sucking in all the, the water, once those trees are gone, the flooding problems that have already occurred in that area are going to be worse. And the plan that we saw today, it looks like half of the, the surface space is either a building or cement, and that was one of the issues that came up with the proposed library, is the water runoff from all the cement and the building itself. Anne talked about that this would be for medium income, so it's not, as many times as I've heard the village say they would like affordable housing, that medium income is not affordable housing. And I've spoken to Anne, and she said that this would be her first project, she hasn't done a project like this before. So here we have our beautiful, irreplaceable green space in Oregon, and are we going to have someone who's never done a project before design a project for that property? And after all the talk that the village has had about someone purchasing the property because they want to, um, recoup money, I'm surprised now that there's talk about possibly renting out the land, and then the village would become liable for any issues, or if the property doesn't pan out, or if the project fails. Um, and Anne just mentioned in her presentation that... And Anne just mentioned in her presentation that she would like some green space there and some paths, but the drawing showed no room for green space or, or paths. So, but Anne, I think that you have some really good ideas, and possibly we could work together because part of that land with the beautiful trees, that part should definitely be preserved. But then there's other space on the lot where the, the tree issue would not, not be relevant. So I would really like to see the preservation of the trees with the deep roots and the history, and they're healthy trees. They should not be allowed to be destroyed. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, anybody else?
My name's Sarah Dewey's, the last name, two, six, six North Main Street. And um based on the experience over the last fifteen or so years, I'm not very optimistic. I'm a little pessimistic. And I, I don't understand the process of what's all going on in relation to two forty-nine. The, the talk at a few meetings back about the RFPs came out, and though, I'm, I was struck by the wording of it that was being proposed, and there was discussion about revising some of it. But in the survey and again in this RFP that was put up in that meeting, the wording in both the survey that went out and this seems like it's directing towards development and the request for development. And really minimizing green space to a certain extent. And again, I don't understand the process exactly. I just, I feel like there's behind-the-scenes things going on, and I'm not trying to accuse anybody of anything. I just don't understand what's going on. When Anne, nice presentation, by the way, is doing her presentation, she's talking to Elise, and are you two working together on this? I do, I just, I just don't get it. So um I guess clarification at some point from somebody. And really, what was the purpose of the survey? What's the intent of the board and the village staff related to the, the results of the survey? And is there an underlying already decided or focus on a certain direction that this group is looking at for that property?
Thank you.
Thanks.
Anybody else? Yeah?
Hello, Scott Michaels, um six-thirty South Woods Edge Drive, Anne's husband and treasurer of Green Pastures Living. Just want to clarify a few points. First off, since I'm the treasurer, I run all the numbers. In order to be a nonprofit for affordable housing, eighty percent have to be at eighty percent of the median income or below. Or, you know, or lower. So if we do this project, eighty percent will be considered affordable housing. You can't argue with that and still be a nonprofit. So that is very clear. Uh, second point, just rebutting a few things, is the, the, the architectural drawings were the maximum number that can fit in that space. This is our pilot project. We probably can't do ten buildings, twenty units, as a pilot project. So we're open to other ideas. We are happy to work with the spaces and the, the trees and everything like that. So I think, I agree, we could, we could partner together. We can make things work. We don't want this to be contentious. We want the, everybody to be able to, to work things out and make things, you know, work for the seniors who need the housing, work for people who want to enjoy the nature space.
All right, thank you very much. Anybody else?
Ray Vogler, two ninety-nine North Main Street. I'm here for two reasons. One is I'm on the Ad Hoc Transportation Committee, and the board should have received the latest version of the survey. Do you see that maybe in front of you, the survey? So anyways, what I wanted to say is that the survey's been a work in progress for about, oh, I don't know, three, four months. A lot of work, and I want to actually call out to some people in particular who did some great work. Uh Carol Cushing, who's no longer on the committee, did an excellent job of doing all of this research. And then recently Amanda did the work of putting it online, so it was really excellent. I appreciate people doing that work. And it might need a few little tweaks, but we just want you to see what it looks like after you had approved it at the last meeting. Now, all the verbiage is there. And the game plan for that is that it will be printed and online, available the middle of December, and people will be able to put their comments out there between mid-December till mid-January. And then we'll be closing down the survey January thirteenth. And then the paper copies, you may already know, will be distributed to places around town, so people can pick them up, fill them out, mail them. Um, and those who want to do online surveys, they will just use their, whatever, you know, laptop or a smartphone, and then they can just put that information in. So I wanted to report that. And then the other thing is, um, you know, we've all gotten to know Anne, and I wanted to say to you two, great presentation. We actually met her at the open house on the hill. We met her when we did this, you know, survey um presentation at the village hall, and then we've all just pretty much been in contact. So I appreciate that she put this out here, this plan, and I just wanted to raise a few little concerns and possible tweaks. And I was glad to hear about the fact that this will be not just middle income, but low income, because that was one question I had. When reading part of this, it said, "Middle-income seniors are the forgotten group" because they don't have advocacy. So I thought this was actually targeting uh middle-income seniors. The other issue that I wanted to bring up is if you look at the plan, you probably have it in your packet, the one that has ten of these buildings, and the buildings are laid out flat, right? So if a building is two thousand square feet, it's not one thousand up and down, right? So you're talking a footprint of two thousand square feet, which is quite big. And I think that it's really not manageable to have one, two, three, four, five, six, maybe seven, one, two, three, four. Yeah, to have six um of these on the top of a hill. Because we already know most of us walk the land, and if we do that, not only will that affect the soil, people already said that, um, it could affect erosion, create erosion, you know, cut down a lot of the trees accidentally, they'll die, and therefore we won't have the, the water sink. But beyond that, um, the plan that people had when they filled out the survey was that we would have a real park. Um, you know, not a park, people just kind of walking between houses, which might be nice, but it's not what people had in their minds. People, when they filled out the survey in good faith, they thought we would have real walking trails. You know, probably something uphaved, that they would have gardens to walk through, that they might have like kids' artwork to look at. There might be a pavilion, a children's area, and I don't see how that could work with the way this plan is now.
All right, Ray, you're over three, you're ready. Can you wrap it up, of course?
Okay. So what I'd like to say is that um our group, the Oregon Sculpture Garden, Friends of Oregon Sculpture Garden, is incorporated. And we're working towards nonprofit status, we're becoming more and more official as an organization. And uh, and we are amenable to working with people, but we just want to make sure that we all come from the same perspective, that we want this really to be a park. And, uh, and we can work with the park and having possibly at the lower part of the hill, where older people would be able to walk, actually, some senior housing that is low income. So we are very flexible. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Yes, sir. Come on up.
Uh, John Tempti, uh, two ninety-four North Main Street. Thank you so much. Number one, uh, just want to express appreciation, appreciation to the board for historical. So one of the options in the past was a, it would have been the seventh largest assisted living in the state of Wisconsin. And I think you had the foresight to see that was not compatible with property. From a historic point of view, uh, that piece of property from the time it was consecrated by the Methodist Church has always been public space. So I think uh keeping in mind uh having a property that serves the public. We've heard a number of people talk about the value of green space. Uh, as a physician, most of what we're dealing with after the pandemic right now uh is mental health issues, a lot of anxiety, depression. We know that green space is one of the benefits there. I don't know where you should go with this, but uh in terms of the property, there's a, an upper, an area. That's where the old growth is, the big trees is lower, which has always been more kind of a field. When the Methodist Church was there, that was the overflow parking, uh, people parked in the grass and so on. So I'm not sure which way to go, but I think keeping the spirit of open space, keeping the spirit of public space, I think is very, very important. If we're able to, as Ray had mentioned, accommodate uh some low-cost housing for elders, particularly on that lower section, I, I think the neighborhood would be in, in favor of things like this. So I, I think looking at that property again from a standpoint of uh public, open space, uh, and probably some multi-use to it, uh, I think is a, a very nice compromise. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, anybody else? Okay. Thank you, everybody, on the comment. All right, let's go to five board members, approval of vouchers in the amount of four-hundred-and-seventy-three thousand nine hundred ninety-two dollars and thirty cents. If we get a motion in a second, we'll get her on the table. I saw Derek and Amanda. All right, anybody have any questions? Mike Scott, something.
Just one, number fifteen thirty-two, parks bike, bike path etiquette?
Yeah, those are, that's, those are the etiquette signs that we had made, um, that say move over, pass on the left. They're out on the, they're out on the bike path. We had maybe four or five signs made.
I gotta tell you, those signs that you have out there that are like fifteen percent grade, those hills used to seem a lot easier to go over before you put those signs there.
Yeah. So that, that's what we, we work, City of Madison has a sign shop that we get stuff, custom stuff through.
Thank you.
Yep.
Anybody else? All right, Candy, we'll take a voice vote.
Wunsch?
Yes.
Glish?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Bilo?
Yes.
Van Campin?
Yes.
And Peterson?
Yes.
All right, thank you. We'll go to six, consent agenda. A through D is on our consent agenda, agenda tonight. Get a motion in a second for those. Derek and Amanda?
Can we pull six D out?
Six D, okay, we can pull six D off. So let's approve A, A through C then.
So Bilo moved?
Yeah, is that okay?
Yep.
Yeah, Amanda, you're okay with that? All right. Any other discussion on, otherwise all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, let's deal with D.
Uh, just a question here. It's, advances are for what or whom, and how long are the advances for?
We're down to just one advance, um, and that is for the property in TIF four. When, that was developed, that was, came about before I came here, so I'm gonna have to refresh my memory what all the, I think the majority of that money was setting up with TIF four. And the general.
It's to ourselves, right?
Yes. It's an advance from our general fund to TIF four when we develop that TIF district. So there's um, there's an amount of money that was advanced to the TIF in order to set the TIF district up.
Okay.
Unfortunately, it's been underperforming, so it hasn't been paid back.
So the advances are interdepartmental, or interfund.
Yeah.
Village interfund money going to a different fund, to a different fund. And um, you know, we only have one here, but sometimes communities will have many of them set up, especially between utilities and general funds sometimes. And this is just setting the interest rate for the principal amount that's being paid back. Usually there's an amortization schedule set up and everything. Um, so this is just setting a interest rate for those advances.
Okay, so it's really kind of us paying ourselves?
Yeah, so the TIF is paying back the general fund with some interest.
Is there any benefit to us making that two percent as opposed to one percent? I mean, does that end up with eventually more money in the general fund?
Yeah, Ken, I think we've historically for this one, we've set the interest rate every year, so.
Yeah, it's an annual thing that we've done since I've been here.
So if you wanted to set it at two, you could.
Yeah. I mean, I just took, because at the beginning of this year, we were receiving point zero seven percent interest. And now we're up to two point six eight. I mean, that's a big fluctuation, and when you're usually, there's not that much fluctuation. So I just kind of took the average of where we were at the beginning of the year through the end of October.
Yeah, the, the.
To come up with the interest rate. I mean, next year, there'll probably be something totally different because the interest rates are just continuing to decline.
And that's kind of my argument on this, too, is when I look at what's going to happen with interest rates, they're not going down, so I would rather see us get more money for this as opposed to less.
This interest rate is for this year, it's not for next year.
Yeah, it'll be the same as this year.
Oh, it's for twenty-two?
Yes.
No problem, then, I'm sorry.
Twenty-twenty-two, the interest rate had, yeah.
Okay.
So, yeah, it's for setting the interest rate for twenty-twenty-two.
So at the time, usually at the time of the audit, all of these things are completed.
All right, so we'll leave it at that.
Yeah, objection.
Let's uh, let's have a motion in a second to get that, that one approved then. D, Amanda and Phil, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, thank you. Seven, reports of committees, items offered discussion, possible action. Seven A is the Ad Hoc Public Transportation Committee. A one is Alyssa Rosner to the Ad Hoc Public Transportation Committee. If somebody wants to make a motion in a second, Amanda and Mike? Any discussion?
Yeah, I just want to say that I work with Alyssa Rosner. Uh, she's on one of the subcommittees for the Ad Hoc Sustainability Committee. She's on the Watershed Natural Environment Committee. She's done a phenomenal job, and I think she'd be great on the Transportation Committee.
Okay, all right, we're gonna motion in a second.
I didn't get the motion at all.
Oh, I think it was Mike and Amanda.
Okay.
I think it's the other way, but that's.
Is it?
Oh, I don't care.
All right.
Put it in there however you feel like it.
I will pick. I will go in alphabetical.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, okay. Uh, then two is public survey. Amanda, do you want to take?
Yeah, I just, I just, uh, had a, a comment. Yeah, yeah, so um, you know, even since you guys, we've approved that, there've been minor, little typo changes, very, very minor, but this is the complete survey with the question that was missing before. And Ray, as chair, wanted to make sure that we all saw it the way, this is, this is pretty much what it's gonna look like when it goes out. The back is missing, but it'll have postage and where you fold it over and that, but. But I also wanted to make a comment, too, because uh when we talked about the survey at the last meeting, I apparently, um, I, I was told that it came across like I was taking credit for uh doing the survey, and that was not me. That was Carol Cushing and Ray Vogler, who did the lion's share of the work. Uh, and they deserve the credit for putting together uh the survey, which I think is excellent, and it'll be great. So I just wanted to clarify that, because I'm not the kind of person that wants to take credit for other people's work. So it was not me who did the survey. Um, they worked very hard on it. A lot of wordsmithing went into it, a lot of back and forth, so just wanted to make that clear.
So let's have a motion in a second. Let's get it on the table. Let me see if there's any discussion.
I'll motion.
Amanda, you want a second? Somebody want to second it?
I don't know that we need to approve it. I guess not. We didn't really need to at the last meeting, I guess.
Because of the changes.
They're, they're mu, they're not material changes.
All right, perfect.
They're tiny, so. This is just so you guys see it mainly.
That's perfect. Okay, let's go to eight then. Unfinished business, items offered discussion, possible action. Eight A is proposals for appraisal of the two forty-nine, two sixty-seven North Main Street properties. Who's got, Elise, guy?
I'm up. All right, so uh as discussed at our November fourteenth meeting, um, and as directed by the board, I went ahead and got two quotes from local appraisal companies that are both very highly rated in the area, Valcor Appraisal and Masters Hall Appraisal. The, the low bidder was Valcor Appraisal. They kind of gave us a tiered pricing option, as you saw in your uh package, just based on how quickly we would need an appraisal done. Masters Hall is at on the high end just because of the ambiguity of, and the difficulty in appraising a vacant property. So with my conversations with both of them, I kind of explained, you know, we had a community survey done. This is sort of um in terms of if development would occur, this is the type of density that would likely be um more acceptable and kind of a better fit within the neighborhood. So we, usually with appraisal, they appraise to the highest and best use and um. So we, usually with appraisal, they appraise to the highest and best use and I think we all agree that, you know, high-density housing or development really wouldn't be appropriate here. So regardless, that's information that they would take into their appraisal. So these are the prices. Valcor said they would be able to get that back to us within four weeks and we have these funds in our professional planning services fund. So my recommended motion is to go with Valcor and get this rolling and hopefully have that appraisal back by the middle of January.
Anybody want to make a motion in a second? All right, so Derek and Amanda, all right, discussion, anybody? Okay. So we're taking the little poll over, yeah. All right, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Eight E, review priorities for zoning text amendments, including amendments to implement recommendations from the House in Affordabilities Report. Elise, is that you two?
It's me, I'm sorry. So the, you all saw this back, and I think around September. This is a list of post-texted amendments that have been accumulating on my whiteboard upstairs for a long time. These are kind of broken into short-term changes, more formatting changes, things to clean up, have our code match, some changes that have happened in state law over the last couple of years, changes and things that Jeff and I get frequent questions about, about fencing, setbacks, things just to clarify within the code. So I think most of those are pretty straightforward, happy to answer any questions, but if you all are supportive, I would go ahead and work with Vanda Wall to get the exact language put together for those changes and then we'd be able to look at that and have the planning commission take a look at that too and kind of get the green light before we actually put it in ordinance format, which is what changes the code itself. The midterm changes are changes that would require more of a policy decision and could be a discussion point later, so would love to hear from you all, whether it's now or later, if there are points within that that you'd like to discuss a little bit further. I still have plenty of learning to do myself of what the changes could actually look like and what are the implications or pros and cons of making some of these changes. And then the last section of changes are things that I think will be best served to update later next year with update to our comprehensive plan, just to make sure that the changes that we make kind of flow well with new, any new future land use districts and that we just have a zoning code and a cop plan that work well together. So we're not creating things in our zoning code that aren't really possible with our current comprehensive plan. But definitely things we want to keep on the forefront as we move into the cop plan process next year, the update.
So Elise, what are you looking from us tonight? Just discussion and where do you want to, are you looking for a motion?
Yeah, I think just discussion. I don't know that we necessarily need a motion because we're not voting on any particular ordinance or anything, but I think specifically for the short-term changes, just want to get verification. I have to share this with the planning commission. They're supportive of the changes. Again, they would want to see the exact language too. So if you all are supportive, then we will work with Vanda Wall again to get some of those, they'll look at some of their recent codes that they've written in other communities that are about our size and then give us recommendations as to what that can actually look like. But there's been a lot of gray area and things like chickens and bees that it's kind of been unclear, I think, for people as to, there are obviously people that have chickens in town, but you know, where can they, where can the coops be? And sometimes chickens end up in the neighbor's yards and just kind of clarifying how some of those things should be treated, I think will help alleviate a lot of questions that we get frequently.
Who's got, anybody have anything want to discuss or questions for Elise? Yeah, Mike?
Yeah, you'll be happy to know, Randy, I spent 40 minutes on the phone with Elise today just so I didn't have to do it tonight.
All right. Thank you.
I wholeheartedly support what you're doing, Elise. I think this is great.
All right, all right, Elise, looks like.
All right, we're going.
All right, eight C, we are actually moving to December 19th, so when Carlene is back, is that correct?
Yep.
So we'll discuss that one when she gets back on the 19th. Nine is, is new business, items offered discussion, possible action. Nine A, future agenda items, gives the board members opportunity to place titles and new business on our future agenda for discussion. Anybody? Okay, not seen anything. We'll go to 10, report of village officers. 10 A, village administrative report, that was in the packet. 10 B, anything from village department head staff or, yeah, chief?
So Saturday morning, we had our K9 breakfast. We knew it would be a big challenge because we haven't been in person for quite some time because of the pandemic. I first want to thank the board members that could make it. That means a lot to us, our staff and our fam, our staff's families. Really proud of my staff, you know, they work, a majority of them, a 6-3 rotation. They work weekends, they work holidays and a lot of overtime lately. So for them to come in on their time off, donate their time and help make pancakes, eggs, all kinds of stuff, baked goods, and then to also talk their family into doing it, it meant a lot. And it was nice to just hang out and work together. Unfortunately, this year, the fire department was not a venue option for us, but first phone call I made was to Jeff.
I like pancakes.
He's the hero he is. Provided the awesome backup, him and his staff stepped up without hesitation. Oh, and I tell you, it went so well. This was a rebuild year for us and I think he's stuck with us now.
We're good with that.
Yeah. We really enjoyed.
You guys will get your deposit back.
Yeah. So I think moving forward, if Jeff will have us, we will be over there. It went really well. And I want to thank the department heads too that came down. I know some couldn't make it, but some did. I tried to talk Lisa into fitting a pancake in her pocket for the road, but she turned it down. But no, it went really well, better than we expected and we certainly plan on making some tweaks for next year's. But again, just wanted to say thank you to everyone who pitched in. I know I didn't even do as much as some of my other staff and I went home and I slept for four hours, so I was tired. So, but just thank you again, I appreciate it.
Anybody else? Yeah? Okay, all right. Good luck, board comments. Anybody have anything want to share? All right. 11 announcements, we did the proclamation already and then 11 B, upcoming meetings and events. I think that's, that's enough. That's all.
Randy, I wanted to apologize. I don't know why we're not working tonight with the microphones. Our apologies to everybody for that.
That's the way it goes.
It's never gone like this bad before, so we'll be looking into it. I will say we are investing money in the new building to where we won't have these kind of problems, so. Because we want, we want people to be over here and see.
It's a big promise.
Well, we're writing a big check, so.
So was it working before we started?
It was.
It was, yeah. We think it's something with the router, so.
Okay.
We'll get on it.
How about adjournment? Motion? Amanda, second, somebody? Jenna? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, we're done.
Yeah, it's not Dan's fault back there. He's, he's just the pilot at the controls. The plane's going nose down.